This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 28th, 2024. We're the Soson Board of Appeals for the City of East Hampton. This is, uh, we'll call it or the meeting. Is there anyone interested in having anything to say that is not pertaining to the hearing those before us this evening?
Give me the date correction.
Yeah. Did I say the wrong date?
Yeah, you said the 28th.
I'm sorry. The 18th. Sorry about that. It's written correctly. All right. And, uh, we do not have any meetings from prior meeting, any minutes from the prior meetings, correct?
Nope, uh, nothing for this meeting anyways.
All right, and so at this time, we will call to order the meeting for, uh, application for 385 and 391 Main Street via Community Builders. This is a continuation of a meeting started 7/31/2024, continued to 8/14/2024 and 9/11/2024. The applicant is seeking a comprehensive permit to create 87 new and rehabilitate 40 existing affordable rental units subject to Mass. General Law Chapter 40B. The applicant is proposing three new buildings on 55.54 acres. The proposal is located 385 and 391 Main Street in an R-35 zoning district. At the conclusion of our previous meeting, we were, uh, had completed Section A of the decision, reading of the decision. Uh, at this point, we have all of the, those modifications have been updated in the latest version that we have before us. I guess the one thing I do want to bring up is that since then, we have received a, uh, notice from, um, the previous, uh, city engineer for the city pertaining to the sewer line that was installed or, or, or potential sewer line connection. Uh, so I will read what he has said. Um, "As the retired city engineer for the City of East Hampton, I wish to provide my comments concerning the proposed comprehensive permit at 385 Main Street. Let me first say that I am fully in support of the project going forward, which will increase our supply of affordable housing units. However, I have concerns with the condition of the existing sanitary sewer system on Main Street. This project will discharge in excess of 10,000 gallons per day of sanitary flow to an already overburdened sewer main. This is not a new issue. Over the years, the city has accepted sanitary flow from several businesses in Southampton, namely Big Y, the Red Rock Plaza, and the former Harley Davidson Building, and others. Accepting this flow into the City of East Hampton sewer system is the correct thing to do. We do benefit from the surcharges on the sewer fees. My concerns are that simply dumping a large new flow into the new, into the main will impact the existing sewer users downstream. Prior to my retirement, I had worked on a preliminary design for a new sewer line from Main Street down to the interceptor sewer along the bike path across the undeveloped land at MAP 154, Lot 4. A sanitary manhole was installed on the bike path sewer main to accept future flow from Main Street. The idea was to divert all the extra flow from the southern end of Main Street to, across private property and into the newly installed bike path sewer main. This would relieve much of the burden on the existing sewer main. This concept was never put forward at the time, however, with the potential substantial flow coming from the proposed project to 385 Main Street, now would be the time to pursue this work. The work would require a pending easement from the property owner of the undeveloped land. Approximately 1,200 lineal feet of new sewer main would be needed. How this work would be funded is a question for others, but I feel that this is the time to pursue this prior to the development of the proposed large new housing project. And please pass along my comments as on board during their approval process for the comprehensive permit. Signed, Jim Garcia. City Engineer Retired. So with that in mind, I do know we have, uh, Greg Noddleman, the current City, uh, Public Works Supervisor. Um, can you address that commentary in some way, sir?
Yes, uh, so prior to us paving, we paved Womelco Way last year, 2023. I think it was in 2021. We installed a eight-inch sanitary sewer line from the interceptor, um, the end of Womelco that Jim's referring to in his letter, to the top of Womelco Way, and we've spoken with the developers of this project to getting on, getting their sanitary sewer flow into that manhole and onto Womelco Way and down to the interceptor, that route rather than the route that Jim has described in the letter he prepared.
Okay, so in basically, so what you're saying is that the, the discharge from this development would be a dedicated line down the eight-inch line on Womelco Way?
Oh, not, not dedicated, but there's some other things on it, but it makes the volume of flow on Main Street irrelevant because it will never hit Main Street. It will hit Womelco Way and then the rail, the rail trail interceptor pipe.
All right. Thank you for addressing that concern. All right, at this time, we will continue reading the, uh, decision for the City of East Hampton. Uh, having finished Section 1 at the previous meeting, we will now start with Section B, uh, affordability.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to point out changes from the last line.
Oh, yes, please.
Where?
Yes.
Use the minor ones such as the date obviously is updated and the date in line two. I've updated that as well just to include September 18th. On factual findings, on, I believe, number 19, I've included that language of the bird for bird testimony from the applicant's app. This was norma, this was plan and design, but I've included that language. Uh, I removed that language about the finding, uh, the traffic-related finding that we did not make. Uh, and then number 25 of the board finds, this will add 43.1 acres of conserved land consistent with East Hampton's open space plan. Uh, that has been, uh, included as well, and I believe those are the changes that were requested at the last meeting. Other than that, um, yeah, you can continue.
All right.
Dylan or Mr. Chair, when can we take comments on those? Hold on.
Um, we're going to read through the decision at which point we will make, we will hear comments from the public.
Thank you.
Carol?
I may as well start. I'm, I'm on the wall right now. Uh, Section B, affordability. Except as may otherwise be allowed by subsidizing E A E O H L C or other subsequent subsidizing agency pursuant with the applicant, with the applicable subsidy programming. A minimum of 25% or 32 units of the rental units shall be reserved for income-eligible households, meaning they shall be rented to and occupied by households whose income adjusted for household size is not more than 80% of the area median income, AMI, as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the subsidizing agency, affordable units, notwithstanding the preceding language, which still prevails, the applicant has proposed that 100% of the units in the project is reserved for affordable units, with 21 units being rented and occupied by persons making not more than 30% AMI, 83 units being muted, being rented and occupied by persons making not more than 60% AMI, and 23 units being rented and occupied by persons making not more than 80% AMI. Affordable units shall, upon intenuous intentional designation, be dispersed throughout the project in accordance with the guidelines of the subsidizing agency, except for fluctuations based on changes of household eligibility income allowed by the regulatory agreement. The applicant shall be responsible for maintaining records sufficient to comply with the subsidizing agency guidelines for the location of affordable units in the project and occupancy of such affordable units by income-eligible households. As was set forth more fully in the regulatory agreement, the location of the affordable units may change in the event that the income of the household occupancy occupying an affordable unit increases beyond allowable program unit limits. The board acknowledges that affordable unit location is an issue within the exclusive jurisdiction of the subsidizing agency. All of the four projects' affordable units shall be restricted for rental to households earning not more than the maximum allowable household income adjusted for household size and determined by E O H L C or any substitute subsidizing agency. The affordable units shall be maintained as affordable in perpetu-, in perpetuity, which for the purposes of this decision shall mean for so long as the property does not comply to applicable zoning requirements within the benefit of this comprehensive permit. The applicant shall.
Mr. Chairman, um, just kind of, I don't know how you want to handle it, Peter Freeman for the applicant.
Um, yes.
There is, there are side notes, there's just not many, a few places where we suggested some changes, and this is one of them noted, uh, in Dylan's side comment that the applicant had requested rather than perpetuity that it be about 40 years, and that's more in line with program requirements.
So you're, you're asking for a 40-year rather than until zoning is changed?
Well, rather than saying, uh, in, in perpetuity, we'd say in 40 years. It could still say or until, you know, um, unless sooner, we'd have to change the say, unless, uh, sooner, you know, it complies.
Okay. And what does the board have to say about that or the thoughts from the board on that?
Um, I don't have a problem. I think it's pretty standard. And it's happened a lot, and, you know, the only thing that really goes past the, uh, 40 years and limits and like.
All right. Paul, what is your thought on that?
So, Mr. Chairman, the standard is affordability in perpetuity. Um, there is actually case law from the Supreme Judicial Court that notes that if a decision is silent on the term of the affordability, that it'll be affordable in perpetuity or for as long as the project is not consistent with local zoning. Um, I, I think that 40 years seems like a long time, but at some point, you know, you will get to that, and the last thing that the, the city is going to want is the potential for an expiring affordability. So my recommendation would be that the board not agree to this change and keep the affordability as in perpetuity.
So we are approving this with the intention of increasing our affordable housing, available affordable housing units to meet the state requirement of the 10%, which is the reason for the application through a 40B application. Am I correct in that? And if that's, and so if that's the case, then I think I do not see the 10% affordability act from the state going away, whether it's in 10 years, 20 years, or 40 years. So I think the last thing we want to do is be taking affordable units off the, off the, uh, available, uh, 10%. Does that?
Yep.
Does that make sense? Is that what we're saying there? So I, I am, uh, I am in favor of keeping this in perpet-, in perpetuity as it is written in this decision.
I agree.
Okay. So with that, we will continue. "The applicant shall maintain approval by the subsidizing agency of the Affirmative Fair Housing Market Plan, A F H M P, prior to the rental of any affordable units and shall ensure that the project complies with the subsidizing agency's fair housing requirements. For the initial rent-up of the project, the maximum number of affordable units allowed by law and the applicable subsidy program, but not more than 70% of the affordable units, shall be reserved for households that qualify under the local preference definition approved by the subsidizing agency. A lottery shall be established in a form approved by the subsidizing agency and/or the project's monitoring agency to effectuate this local preference with an approved secondary lottery for all other applicants. The applicant shall assist the city in the submittal of any evidence required by the subsidizing agency to support this local preference requirement. The board acknowledges that it will be required to provide evidence satisfactory to the subsidizing agency of the need for the foregoing local preference and to obtain approval by the categories of the persons qualifying for the same, and in no event shall the applicant feed violation of the terms of the comprehensive permit to the extent that subsidizing agency disapproves the local preference requirements or any aspect thereof. The applicant shall provide reasonable and timely assistance to the city in providing this evidence. If the board or its designated does not provide such information within 60 days of the written request by the law applicant, it's a lottery agent, the subsidizing agency, then the condition shall be void unless the applicant has failed to provide reasonable and timely assistance as described above."
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, so Paul, is, for local preference definition, is there an established definition? Or do we have to define that we mean within municipality? Are you muted, Paul?
Sorry, the, the problem is if you try to, um, dictate the terms of the local preference, you might run into problem with the subsidizing agency. I would leave it to whatever terms that they allow for local preference. So, so you should be able to have that set up through the, the process of approval of the local preference.
And, and the definition of local preference, is that a mileage? Is that a municipality?
When you mean, who gets to define what local preference is?
Yes.
Again, the, the subsidizing agency, which is the entity that is ensuring compliance with fair housing requirements, gets to determine what local preference is. And they get to determine whether or not you get to, um, include a local preference or, you know, whether you can't include a local preference. It's, it's solely within the discretion of the subsidizing agency.
Okay, submission requirements. "Prior to any construction or site development activities, including site clearing, tree removal, grading, et cetera, on the property, whether or not pursuant to a building permit, except as allowed by the city planner, as noted below, the applicant shall, A, deliver to the board a check in a reasonable amount determined by the city planner to be used for staff to retain outside experts, if necessary, for technical reviews and inspections required under these conditions, but it, but at inception shall not exceed $6,500 unless an alternate amount has been agreed upon by the board and the applicant. Said funds shall be deposited by the board in an account pursuant to general law 4453G and shall only be used for technical reviews and inspections associated with this project. Any unspent funds shall be returned to the applicant with the accrued interest at the completion of the project. If at any time the board reasonably determines that there are insufficient funds to cover the cost of technical reviews, it shall inform the applicant, and the applicant shall forthwith deliver additional funds as specified by the board in a reasonable amount as may be determined by the board. Said funds may be used by the board to hire civil engineering, traffic engineering, and/or other professionals that the board deems necessary, reasonably necessary to ensure compliance with the conditions hereup. Obtain and file a copy of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPZES, permit with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency if necessary. The board shall also provide, be provided with a copy of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, submitted along with the NPZES filing. Submit to the board for review and administrative approval final engineering drawings and, and plans, such plans to be, that the plans conform to the requirements of the comprehensive permit and incorporate the conditions herein. The final plans shall also incorporate all conditions and requirements of permitting agencies having jurisdiction. Applicable sheets of the final plan shall be signed and sealed by a professional land surveyor of record, the professional civil engineer of record, the registered landscape architect. Final architectural plan shall be stamped by registered architect. The final plan shall be submitted to the board at least 45 days prior to the anticipated date of commitments, commencement of building construction or submission of the application for building permits, whichever is earlier. Submit to the board for the administrative approval a landscaping plan with the final plan, signed and sealed by registered landscape architect, depicting the following: overall plant plan that includes the demarcation of clearing and the limits of work; planting plans for drives showing shade trees and existing fixture locations, relating fixtures, locations; plans of the walkways and open space recreation areas.
A question before we turn the page. Yes, at what point do we make mention of the sewer connection? Would that be part of C here in design? Or is there somewhere else for specifying that? You know, the sewer connection, like, Mr. Noddleman said.
There will be a section on sewer, uh.
There's project in design and construction. I'd say that's under E.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I got, no, no, I appreciate it. Um, "Prototype planting plans for each building that include shade trees, minimum caliper of 2 inches, ornamental trees, minimum caliper of 2 inches, and shrubs and ground covers. Prototype screening plans for dumpsters depicting it's and fencing. Planting details for connectors and deciduous shade trees, minimum caliper of 2 inches, ornamental trees, minimum caliper of 2 inches, and shrubs. Planting schedules listing the quantity, size, height, caliper, species, variety, and form of trees, shrubs, and ground covers. Tree protection and preservation plans. Construction fencing along budding property lines and construction details. All planting shall consist of non-invasive drought-tolerant species. Plantings installed along drives and walkways shall also be salt-tolerant. The final landscaping plans shall preserve the existing perimeter tree cover to the greatest extent possible. 12 months after completion of the plantings, the applicant shall remove and replace any dead or diseased plants, plantings and trees serving as screening. The contract with the management company shall address ongoing maintenance of landscaping features. Submit to the city planner a construction mitigation plan, including but not limited to dust control measures, fill delivery schedules, stockpiling areas, and the like matters. Other than site plan and such work as may be authorized in writing by the city planner, no other construction units shall commence, and no building permits shall be issued under this comprehensive permit until the building commissioner and the other applicable staff have approved the final plans as the building as being in conformance with the decision. If no written response or comments have been given to the applicant by the building commissioner or other applicable cities staff concerning the final site plans, within 45 days after the final site plan submission date, the final plans as delivered will be deemed to be approved." Okay. Next one, in the right place. Uh, "The applicant must provide notification to the City of East Hampton's assessor's office to address, for address and unit numbering." Take a turn. Sure. "Prior to the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall record this comprehensive permit and the subdivision plan endorsed by the board with the Hampshire Registry of Deed at the applicant's expense and provide proof of such recording with the board. Submit to the board and city planner evidence of final approval from the subsidizing agency, E O H L C, as required by the project eligibility letter in Chapter 40B regulations. Submit to the board a copy of the regulatory agreement and monitoring services agreement per phase for the project. Execution and recording of such regulatory agreement with the E A, E O H L C shall be completed prior to the issuance of any building permit. It is understood and agreed that monitoring provisions may be included with the regulatory agreement in lieu of a separate monitoring services agreement. Submit to the building commissioner final architectural plans prepared, signed and sealed by an architect with a valid registration in Pampas, Massachusetts, architectural plans. The architectural plan shall be submitted in such form as the building commissioner may request pursuant to State Building Code. An automatic sprinkler system conforming with NFPA 13 or NFPA 13R as allowable by Massachusetts State Building and Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Code 527 CMR 1.00. Fire alarm system conforming to NFPA 72 shall be required in all residential buildings. Fire alarm system shall be monitored by a UL-approved central station monitoring service. Obtain and file with the building commissioner copy of all required federal, state, and local permits and approvals required to begin construction of the project. Submit all necessary electrical plumbing and associated permit applications required to begin construction of the project as required by state law. The applicant will be responsible for all sewer permit capacity impacts and privilege fees as applicable except as waived herein. The applicant will be responsible for all applicable water and sewer system fees as per officially promulgated, these schedules uniformly applicable to all others East City of East Hampton projects, except as expressly waived herein. D, construction completion certificate of occupancy. Prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for any structure in the project, the applicant shall submit engineers' interim certification of compliance with utilities plan and profiles for such phase as applicable to the building commissioner. Provide a letter to the board signed by the applicant civil engineer certifying that the structure supporting infrastructure has been constructed in compliance with the final plans in all material respects. Obtain acceptance from the East Hampton Fire Department of testing of all fire protection systems, fire alarm systems, fire sprinkler systems, and local smoke alarms within dwelling units of the structure. Obtain a sewer connection sign-off from the East Hampton Sewer Commission for destruction." So is that where we want to address it or do we want to address it in the design?
Or right before you?
What's that?
Or the part that we just went over in the, uh?
No, I think, I think that. I think we put it under E.
Yeah, E, because there's other, uh, applicant, DPW, things like that. We're going to go in E or?
So how are we looking to word this?
We're going to, we're going to put the sewer connection in E. Section E.
So that in product design.
Um, D2, "Prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for the residential building to be constructed in each phase, the applicant shall submit to the board in digital file format and full-size paper copies a final as-built plan including profiles showing actual in, in-ground installation of all available utilities, rim and invert elevations, roadway, sidewalk, and associated construction. File format shall be in AutoCAD file delivery, shall be in full model view and individual street views. The digital file shall include property boundaries, dimensions, easements, rights-of-way, edge of pavement, edge of sidewalk, edge of water bodies, wetland boundaries, upper ground contours, spot elevations, parking areas, road center line, and associated text. Said digital data shall be delivered in Massachusetts State Plan Corridor System, North American Data 1983, North American vertical data 1988 in U.S. survey feet. The applicant shall provide to the board evidence of a property management plan, if the property management only done in house, or shall provide a copy of the contract with the management company of the property management will be conducted by a third party. The applicant shall submit to the board all information related to the issues of building security, public access, pet policy, staffing, trash removal, and smoking policies, and other issues addressed in the conditions herein. Section 8, project design and construction. Prior to the commencement of any work on property, applicant and site general contractor shall attend a pre-construction conference with the East Hampton Fire Department, East Hampton Water and Sewer Department, city planner, conservation agent, building commissioner, and other city staff and consultants as may be determined. The applicant shall permit representatives of the board to observe and inspect the property construction progress until such time as the project has been completed and final occupancy permit, permit has been issued. All observations shall be made in accordance with the contractor and owner's site-specific safety plan. Proposed construction shall be in accordance with applicable state laws, rules, and regulations. All site retaining laws four feet or greater shall be. All site retaining walls four feet or greater shall, in height, shall be designed by a Massachusetts professional structural engineer. During construction, the applicant shall conform to all local, state, and federal laws regarding noise, vibration, dust, and blocking of city roads. The applicant shall at times use all reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents in the general area. Adequate provisions shall be made by the applicant to control and minimize dust on the site during construction in accordance with the construction mitigation plan. Applicants shall keep all portions of many quickway uses access ingress to the project free of soil or debris deposited due to use by construction vehicles associated with the project. Appropriate signage shall be shown on the final plans. No waiver of signage requirements is requested if the applicant subsequently determines a waiver is necessary. Shall seek a modification of his permit pursuant to seven six zero CMR fifty-six dot zero five eleven. Location of all utilities, including but not limited to electric, telephone, and cable, shall be shown on final plans. All transformers and other electric and teleportation system components shall be included in final plans.
Okay, I think we want to put it in here because that's where we've addressed utilities. So can we add under E dot seven? The connection of the sewer shall be made to the eight-inch main on Melco Way.
And I'll just create that as a new bullet point and all the other things will shift up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Yep. The applicant proposes to use electric heat for the new construction buildings in the project. The applicant shall install lighting on the site that conforms to the city of East Hampton zoning bylaw. Lighting should be downlit shielded to prevent light spillover on the surrounding properties. Management of outdoor lighting shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Utilities, including but not limited to telephone, electric, and cable, shall be located underground. Contract with management company shall note that no satellite dishes shall be allowed. Soil material uses backfill for pipes, access drives, or structures shall be certified by the geotechnical engineer or third-party special inspector to building commissioner as meeting design specifications as applicable.
Tonight, a quick point of order. I'm going back a couple titles, talking about cable. Now with the fiber optics coming in, should we understand the cable includes that? Or should we also mention fiber optics?
That is all, I think that falls all under utilities.
But we're citing word cable.
Including but not limited to.
Okay.
Yeah, not limited to. Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, the applicant shall test the soil or construction and performs to confirm soil types in the areas in infiltration system. Such testing shall be witnessed by the Department of Public Works. All unsuitable material, if any discovered in excavation for infiltration system, shall be removed and disposed in accordance with state and local regulations. Construction activities will be, shall be conducted between the hours of seven AM and seven PM, Monday through Friday, between the hours of eight AM and four PM on Saturdays. Purposes of condition. Construction activity shall be defined as startup of equipment or machinery, delivery of building materials and supplies, delivery or removal of equipment or machinery, removal of trees, scrubbing, clearing, grading, filling, excavating, import, export of earth materials, installation of utility on and off site, removal of stumps and debris, loading of construction dumpsters, and erection of new structures. All off-site utility work shall be coordinated and approved by the building department and shall not be subject to the time restrictions set forth above. Parking of all vehicles and equipment must be on the property during construction. Burning or burial of construction or demolition debris on the site is strictly prohibited. All such materials are to be removed from the site in accordance with applicable law. During construction, the site shall be secured against unauthorized entry or ventilation by fencing or other appropriate means in all. Construction materials shall be stored or stockpiled in a safe manner. Any floodlights used during construction period shall be located and directed so as to prevent spillover or elimination on two adjacent properties. All construction activities are to be conducted in a workman-like manner. No building area shall be left in an open unstabilized condition longer than sixty days. Temporary stabilization shall be accompanied by hay bales, hay covering, or matting. Final stabilization shall be accomplished by loaming and seeding exposed areas. All dumpsters serving the project shall be enclosed and covered, the exception of construction dumpsters used during construction. The board shall review dumpster locations as part of the final approval of final plans, if different from what is shown on the approved plans. All retaining walls visible from where direct as determined by city planner based upon time of year when such walls were visible shall be constructed in this manner, considering retaining walls which shall avoid the use of exposed concrete to the greatest extent practical. Snow shall be stored within areas of the property designated on the approved plans. Snow storage areas shall be reviewed by the conservation agent as part of the review of final plans. To extend that snowfall exceeds capacity of designated snow storage areas, the applicant shall truck the excess snow offsite. Proof notification of the snow rule through the snow rule contractor under location of snow storage areas shall be provided to building commissioner. Do they have snow storage ones? Or is that not our purpose? It was at Concom. I don't remember seeing that anywhere.
Um, sweet question. What's that one? We talked about snow plan removal. I think during the initial, am I correct about that? It's been, I, I feel like it's been a while since you're at that point.
Yeah.
Does anyone here speak?
Um, yeah, is there anyone here in the applicant here to speak concerning snow storage location?
We haven't developed a brand specifically yet, but there will need to be one for conservation commission, so we will certainly have one as part of that.
And that will be part of the final plan?
Yes, final plan set, yeah.
Did you, we can put a line just in here for administrative approval as well, but it will come to the planning department. Again, the city planner sign off.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it shall comply with all applicable state and federal requirements relating to noise from construction activities, including the regulations contained at three-ten CMR seven dot ten in the EEP's noise policy contained in the DAQC policy D dash zero zero one. The applicant shall also implement all necessary controls to ensure that vibration from construction activities does not constitute a nuisance or hazard beyond the property. On notification from the appropriate municipal officials, the applicant shall cease all construction activities creating noise in excess of state federal standards. Shall implement such mitigation measures as necessary to ensure the construction activity will comply with applicable state and federal requirements. The applicant is responsible for sweeping, removal, sanding of internal roadways, driveways, entryways, and sidewalks, providing access to both the residents of the project and emergency vehicles. The applicant shall maintain all portions of any public road, whether state or local roads, used for access to property by construction vehicles to the degree reasonably possible from soil, mud, or debris deposited due to such use during the duration of construction. The applicant shall comply with DPW requirements regarding curb cut permits. Shall obtain a state highway access permit as necessary from Mass DOT. Extend earth removal, meaning moving earth offsite as necessary, applicant shall prepare an earth removal plan showing all necessary cuts and fills for such offsite removal and describing a good faith estimate of the number of truck trips necessary for the removal. All catch basins shall have oil-water separators as shown on the approved plans. Project sidewalks and pathways, walkways shall be compliant with the requirements in the American Disabilities Act ADA and the requirements of the Architectural Access Board AAB. Significant information regarding grading shall be included in the final plans to allow for determination of compliances ABA and AAB requirements. Comprehensive permit shall be a master permit which is issued in lieu of all other local permits or approvals that would otherwise be required except for the issuance of building permits via certificates of occupancy by the building department under the state building code provided. However, the applicant shall pay all local fees for such permits or approvals as published in the department regulations or bylaws, including that limit to building permits, inspections, water and sewer connections, and curb cuts.
A break?
Want to take a break?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll carry on. F. Traffic, traffic safety conditions, sidewalks. The applicant shall ensure that emergency vehicles can adequately maneuver through the site. The East Hampton Fire Department shall review the final plans to ensure compliance with this condition. Two, the applicant shall supply detailed grading information as part of the final plans to ensure that all accessible parking, walkways, and building entrances will comply with applicable Architectural Access Board and Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. The applicant shall provide surety for the completion of project infrastructure consistent with general law forty-one eighty-one U. The surety shall be kept in place and shall be automatically renewed until such time as construction of the aforementioned driveway and related infrastructure is complete completed and funds are released. The bond amount shall be calculated using the standard myth- mythology, the fall, sorry, established by the East Hampton Planning Board for subdivisions. Police, fire, and emergency medical conditions. The applicant shall provide professional property management and maintenance personnel on the premises during normal daytime hours and an emergency contact name and number for tenants in the East Hampton Fire Department and police department and fire department. The applicant will provide NOX boxes for all buildings for police department and fire department. The applicant will work with the fire department to ensure access during construction. Stairwells and garages must be rated in accordance with the requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code. Residential units must be one what must be one hour fire related. The residual structure will be fully sprinkled sprinkled to NFPA thirteen regulations. Compliance with all state building code and NFPA thirteen requirements relating to fire access and safety shall be met. All elevators be connected to standby power either through the uninterrupted power supply or backup generator where required by the Massachusetts State Building Code. The project shall maintain on-foot firefighter access to all four sides of each residential structure at all time and shall maintain emergency vehicle access at all times as required by the state building in Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Code five-two-seven CMR one dot zero zero. The project shall provide adequate external lighting to ensure safety of the residents of the project. During times of construction, the project, including all structures, shall be accessible to fire department and other emergency vehicles. Additionally, all hydrants shall be operated shall be operational during construction in accordance with the NFPA thirteen requirements. Standpipes shall be operational on each floor during construction as required by the building code in the East Hampton Fire Department. The applicant shall consult with the fire department prior to the commencement of construction to provide an onsite emergency plan which shall be updated as necessary throughout the construction process. Water, sewer, and utilities. The applicant shall be responsible for the design and installation of utilities servicing the project. All water and sewer infrastructure shall be installed in performance with this East Hampton Water and Sewer Department's technical requirements. The applicant shall consult with East Hampton Water and Sewer Department prior to the commencement of the construction.
You just want to pull up there, gentlemen. I'm thinking now that we want to put the, our commentary concerning the sewer connection down here in a chat rather.
Is that the preference of the board? I can do that?
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Okay, uh, fire hydrants shall be placed as shown on the approval plans in locations approved by East Hampton Fire Department and the East Hampton Water Department. If the East Hampton Fire Department approves different hydrant hydrant locations, such modifications shall be accepted as an insubstantial change pursuant to seven sixty CMR fifty-six dot oh five eleven. The service size for the domestic water service should be verified by the East Hampton Water and Sewer Department and information on the fire service size and requirements should be verified by the East Hampton Fire Department. The applicant shall submit in information regarding the size of both the domestic and fire services as part of the final plans after construction with the East Hampton Water and Sewer Department. After consultation with the East Hampton Water and Sewer Department. The water and sewer utilities servicing the buildings in the project shall be installed and tested in accordance with the applicable city requirements and protocols, except as may be waived herein. Utilities shall be installed underground by the applicant using methods standard to those installations. Utilities shall be defined as electric service lines, telephone lines, water service lines, CATV lines, municipal conduit, and the like. The applicant shall be responsible for all trash and recycling removal from the property. The requirement for trash and recycle recycling removal shall be the responsibly responsibility of the applicant and/or its management company and shall not be the responsibility of the tenants of the project. The city of East Hampton shall not have any responsibility for trash and recycling pickup at the property. Fire hydrants shall remain private and shall be maintained by the applicant. Wetlands, environmental, stormwater conditions. The applicant proposes work within the one hundred, one hundred foot buffer zone to a bordering vegetation wetland. The applicant will require, will be required to obtain an order of conditions from the East Hampton Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act or a superseding order of conditions from the Department of Environmental Protection. No structure requiring a building permit, including but not limited to dwellings, garages, storage sheds, or swimming pools, shall be installed or constructed within forty-two feet of any resource area. No stormwater infrastructure shall be, infrastructure shall be installed or constructed within ten foot, within ten feet of any resource area, and no grading shall take place within one foot of any resource area.
Josh, I think you missed I two. Is yours, that one you read I two for you?
Yes. No. I was reading from the first one.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, this is the new one that was added on after uh, our discussion last week.
You want me to read? I'll just put it in there. The applicant must receive, review, and approve, and approval from the conservation commission for the stormwater management plan. Any changes from the plans presented as part of this, this application shall be reviewed by the ZBA at a public meeting.
Okay, I'm just gonna pull up the new one quickly. But it's, we're reading from the same one. Sorry about that. Okay. No structure requiring a building permit, including I just read that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Fertilizers utilized for landscaping and lawn care shall be low release, low nitrogen, less than five percent, and phosphorus-free pipes, and shall not be used within twenty-five feet of the reas- of a resource area. Pesticides and herbicides shall not be used within a hundred feet of a wetland resource area. This condition shall survive this order of conditions and shall run with the title of the property. There shall be no dumping of leaves, rest clippings, brush, or other debris into a wetland resource area or associated buffer zones. Dumping of snow into wetland resource areas is also prohibited. Only non-studium deicing compounds are to be used within wetland resource areas and/or buffer zones, including calcium chloride or calcium magnesium acetate. Deicing compounds shall be stored in sheltered areas on impervious pads. Any arrangement for snow removal shall stipulate the de- 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 All work shall be conducted in accordance with the approval, approved erosion and sediment sedimentation control plan. Within one week of final grading, whether permitting, all disturbed areas, all, all disturbed areas located within wetland resources areas, buffer zones shall be stabilized against erosion. This shall be done either by sodding or by loaming, seeding, and mulching. Should that be seeding or seeing?
Seeding.
Okay, it says seeing. Seeding and according to soil conservation service standards and the approved. Stabilization will be completed when the surface snow shows completed vegetated cover. Temporary stabilization measures approved by the board's inspection engineer will be required should work be interrupted for more than ten days. The applicant or assigns shall ensure the cleanliness of all catch basins and roadway affecting by the project-related activity. All catch basins will be protected by silk bag inlet protection device or equal during the project work period. The applicant shall inspect and clean as necessary all catch basins and sweep the road roadway at least weekly during construction that may be required more frequently during rain events. There shall be no sedimentation in wetlands or water bodies from discharge pipes or surface runoff leaving the property. The board or its agent, which may be the conservation Conservation Commission agent acting on behalf of the board shall have the right to enter the property for inspections and to evaluate compliance with the wetlands' conditions contained herein upon reasonable notice of not less than twenty-four hours. Access shall be allowed in without the need for advanced notice in emergency situations when necessary to prevent imminent harm to wetlands resource area. The applicant shall follow all requirements, permits, and directives issued by the Commonwealth of Mass- Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, NHESP, as applicable. During and after work on this project, there shall be no discharge- During and after work on this project, there shall be no discharge of spillage or fuel or other pollutants into wetland resource area. If there is a spill or discharge of any pollutant during any phase of construction, the commission shall be notified by the applicant within one business day. The construction vehicles, construction vehicles are to be stored within a hundred feet of wetland resource areas overnight. And no vehicle refueling, equipment lubrication or maintenance is to be done within one hundred feet of a resource area. Prior to any work commencing on site, the applicant shall submit to the board proof. That a self verification notification form has been submitted to the US Army Corps of Engineers if required. Prior to any work commencing on site, the applicant shall submit to the board proof the NPDES stormwater permit is active for the project if required. Copies of all information and all required reports regarding the US EPA NPDES permit and stormwater pollutant prevention plans. SWPPT if required shall be forwarded to the forwarded to the board as both a paper and electronic copy. The applicant shall provide a percolation test prior to the issuance of building permits to confirm the infiltration rate for the proposed stormwater management system.
I just clarify, so most of this is all Conservation Commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, everything like referring to them verifying that surface runoff is not going to be leaving the site.
Yep.
And all the language about setbacks and everything.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Other general conditions. This decision will be deemed to be final upon the expiration of the appeal period with no appeal having been filed. Or upon the final judicial decision following the filing of any appeal. Whichever is later, as per seven sixty CMR five fifty-six oh five twelve A. In accordance with seven sixty CMR fifty-six oh five twelve C. This comprehensive permit shall expire three years from the date that the permit becomes final. Unless, one, prior to that time construction authorized by the comprehensive permit has commenced or two. Period is otherwise told in accordance with the law. The applicant may timely apply to the board for extensions to the comprehensive permit as permitted by law. The applicant shall comply with all local regulations to the city and its board commissions and departments unless specifically waived herein. Or is otherwise addressed in these conditions. The applicant shall copy the board on all correspondence between the applicant and any federal, state or city official board or commission. Concerning the conditions set for in this decision. Including but not limited to all testing results, official filings, environmental approvals and other permits issued by the project. This decision prohibits parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle on the site. And likewise prohibits the service of any vehicle on the site except during construction. In the event that the applicant or its management company fails to maintain the stormwater management system for the project. In accordance with its operation maintenance plan. Within fourteen days of notification by the city to the applicant management company. The city may conduct emergency maintenance and or repair as it deems necessary. And the applicant shall, prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy. Convey such easement and other rights in a form mutually accepted to the acceptable to the city and the applicant. As may be reasonably necessary to complete such repair and or maintenance. In the event the city is required. To perform such maintenance, the applicant shall reimburse the city within forty-five days for all its reasonable expenses related to such work. The project entranceway, driveway and drainage systems associated therewith shall be remain private. And the city shall not have any legal responsibility for the operation and maintenance as such. The city shall also have no obligations relating to any proposed recreational areas on the property. The construction and operation of which shall be the sole responsibility of the applicant. If any default violation or breach of these conditions by the applicant is not cured within thirty days after the notice thereof. Or such longer period as time is reasonably necessary to cure such a default so long as the applicant is diligently and continuously prosecuting such a cure. Then the city may take one or more of the following steps. A enforcement by the zoning enforcement officer pursuant to General Law C forty A seven. B. By mandamus or other suit action or other proceeding at law or in equity requiring the applicant to perform obligations under these conditions. Or C, take such other action at law or in equity as may appear necessary or desirable to enforce these conditions. If the city brings any claim to enforce these conditions and the city finally prevails in such claims. The applicant shall reimburse the city for its reasonable attorney's fees and expenses incurred in connection with such claim. Each residential building shall provide laundry facilities as shown on approval plans. Decision, in consideration of all the foregoing, including the plans, documents and testimony given during the public hearing. The board hereby grants the applicant a comprehensive permit for the construction of one hundred and twenty-seven rental apartment units. Pursuant to chapter forty B twenty to twenty-three for the development described above.
All right, um. There are a couple of notes, we just read those over before we then have public here, a public speak. And. The voting.
Before we move on, Mr. Chair, do you want to just run through the decision of waivers?
Yeah, that was the that's that section I was. A decision on waivers. Uh, the board takes the following action on the waivers request of a local law of rules and regulations submitted by the applicant. As it was determined necessary for the construction of the project. As approved by the board. In its preliminary statement, the applicant requests waivers from otherwise applicable building permit and water department fees. As the affordable units, since all of the units of project proposed to be affordable, the waivers to seek, this waiver seeks. A waiver of all building permits and building, that seems repetitive.
And the applicant seeks a waiver?
And yet there's no, we have not made a decision on that and there's no number on that.
I think that's just a.
Or just a general statement.
Yeah.
That was just a general statement, okay. Uh, number one, zoning ordinance, section six to six one. This section requires a minimum lot size for multifamily dwellings with at least. Fifteen percent affordable units to be at least twenty-five thousand square feet per unit. The applicant proposes. Four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two square feet per unit. The applicant requests a waiver to allow the project to be approved as shown on the approved plans. The board is, we've discussed this and we're willing to grant that waiver. Zoning ordinance.
Before you move on, can I just go back to the um, the preliminary statement on the waivers?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify exactly what that meant. So it says in his preliminary statement, the applicant requests waivers from otherwise applicable building permit and water department fees. As to the affordable units. But the proposal is that all of the units would be affordable, so it would in effect. Be a waiver of all building permit and water department fees. So that's what I was trying to get across there.
Okay, and 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 I think we covered that in question eight.
Yes, correct.
In board's action, board's decision number eight. Okay. I just want to thank you for that clarification. Number two, zoning ordinance, section four, six, two. This section requires a maximum building height. A forty feet, the applicant seeks a waiver to allow maximum building height of forty-one feet, three inches. Um, and that's been reviewed and granted. Zoning ordinance four dash eight point three two, C three dot five dot four. This section sets a maximum number of dwelling units per structure at eighteen. The applicant seeks a waiver to allow the project as proposed containing forty units in one structure. And twenty-nine units in the three other structures. It's my understanding the forty units is the existing unit. And the twenty-nine are the three proposed new units. And that is granted. Uh, number four, zoning ordinance, section eight, eight point three three four, C. This section limits the number of parking spaces per parking area to not not more than fourteen spaces. The applicant requests a waiver to allow the parking areas to contain twenty-three spaces, twenty-five spaces and twenty-two spaces. The applicant notes that there is an existing parking area containing forty-four forty-two spaces. So the new spaces would not be in excess of the existing. And granted. Uh, number five, zoning ordinance ten point three, the section requires one point five parking spaces per unit for multifamily. Housing with fifteen percent affordable units. The applicant proposes point seven eight parking units. Parking spaces per unit. And that is also agreed. Section four thousand, that's a new one on me. Site plan review. This section requires site plan review from the planning board for certain development projects. The applicant requests a waiver from the procedural requirements to obtain a site plan approval. Uh, the waiver was denied as unnecessary pursuant to Mass General Law forty B twenty dash twenty-three, a comprehensive permit. Subsumes all local permitting requirements, therefore applicant is not required to obtain a site plan review. Water and Sewer Board, the applicant requests any permits or approvals. Required to connect to the municipal water system and municipal sewer system be waived in favor of the board granting such specific permits. This waiver was denied as unnecessary pursuant to Mass General Law forty B twenty dash twenty-three, all comprehensive permits. Subsumes all local permitting requirements, therefore the applicant is not required to obtain separate approval to connect to the most. Municipal water and sewer systems. And municipal fees, the applicant requests a waiver of all municipal fees for construction permit. This action was denied at the recommendation of DPW director, the board believes the city shall not bear the cost of connections for municipal systems. And or construction fees. I want to add and or construction fees to that. Um, so now my question is, we did add a statement under the water and sewer. That the connection should be made to the eight inch line and will move away. Do we also want to stipulate that again? In this, or is this just waivers? Is this just waivers? So it shouldn't be, never mind. I answered my own question.
Yep.
Just speaking it out loud, so I understand. Okay, so we have read the entire decision as presented. Uh, thank you, Mr. Heberty, for an incredible job there. Thank you all for reading. At this point, we will ask if there's anyone in the public who has any common additional commentary or questions or concerns. They may come forward. I will ask that you state your name, your address for the record. We also ask that any additional, that any subsequent questions be. New in relative and even today, new in relative to where we are, that we don't continue to dwell on any conversations previously discussed.
Mr. Chair, the applicant had a question.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um.
Very difficult.
Sorry to go back. But if we could go back to page thirteen, section C two.
Yes, C two, C?
Uh, yes.
Correct.
So this has to do with the submission of the recorded. EOHLC affordability regulatory agreement and the relationship between when we submit that. And the issuance of the city's building permit, so. Um, just to explain the way the sea cleansing works on these kinds of projects, we have. A lot of folks, the state funders and the city involved in the financial initial construction loan closing of a project. That regulatory agreement, what we propose is that we submit a draft of that. Um, that as prepared by EOHLC to um, the ZBA. Um, it actually can't get recorded, the sequencing is, we need the building permit in order to close on the financing. And then immediately when we close on the financing, all the documents, the date, everything gets recorded. The regulatory agreement would then be recorded and then we can submit the recorded copy to the board. So that would be our request for that item.
Mr. Heberty, you have the expert on this.
Right into this in the past, um. I think, you know, frequently, a building department will be willing to issue a building permit to be held. In escrow by the building departments. Until all of the regulatory requirements have been completed. Because it does get to be a little bit of a chicken or the egg issued there. Uh, but technically, you're not supposed to be issuing building permits until final approval has been issued. And those regulatory documents are part of the final approval process.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Uh, yes, Peter Freeman for the applicant. Um, I agree with what Paul just said. You know, often I put in language sort of a caveat after your condition provided, however, it is understood that. Because the regulatory agreement is not recorded until the closing. That uh, it is sufficient if the building commissioner issues a will issue building permit letter. Stating that it will issue upon recording of the regulatory agreement.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Okay, so so a basically a a letter from the building commissioner saying that a a permit will be issued. And that will allow for the fun, the financing to get and regulatory agencies to go ahead and close their portion and then we can go ahead and proceed.
Right, yes.
Yeah, we'll uh. Clean up that language and get that right and then. I signed off from everybody and then you folks will have final approval of that language. Where you sign.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, sir.
Since my client brought that point, and thank you, Julia. Um, before public comment, um, just something that uh. Our team, especially Mark from Kestrel, uh, caught, so in C one, C point one. Subsection D, which is all the requirements for the landscaping plan. Um, the suggestion is that we carve out the fact that that does not apply to the. Conservation land that will be owned by Kestrel because they will be subject to the conservation restriction, which spells out all those types of details and probably even more restrictive. So my suggestion is after the introduction, before it gets into the one, two, three, et cetera. If we just add provided, however, that this condition is not applicable to the Kestrel Land Trust Conservation Restriction Parcel.
Which which page and which section?
Uh, it's it's page on eleven, I believe it's eleven, but it's condition C point one, D as in David.
C one D.
Yes, bottom of page eleven.
So. The. So you're basically looking at. Sub permitting almost just the section for the construction of the three buildings and supporting infrastructure. And not involving the the property?
No, no, I'm looking and Mark and team, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm looking at subsection D, the one that says submit to the board for its administrative approval. A landscaping plan with the final plans, blah, blah, blah. Depicting the following, and then there's a voluminous list, which is certainly fine as to the. As to the housing portion of the property. Um, but we don't think that it, you know, is applicable or should be applicable to. The land trust area because that's going to be subject to its own restrictive covenant with great restrictions.
Things separate. So basically saying that this landscaping plan is just for whatever the law number is that is under development.
Correct. But it and even even less than that, that only the portion of scene disturbed for the construction.
But the. We don't need to make that, I'm fine with not making that further distinction. I mean, it is the development parcel. For which there will be a landscaping plan with all those with all those details. It's just the non-development parcel. The Kestrel Land Trust Parcel. Where um, I think it's a valid point that Mark raised that it doesn't need to have all those details. Uh, reviewed, it's it's not part of the developed area.
Keep the conversation part, conservation part separate.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair. One thing we might want to be aware of though, on that, um. And I I know it's going to come at some point with uh, talking to Mr. Romansley about this. The parking, the public parking for the conservation land is going to be uh, right on. Somebody's abutting property line there. I know there's been a concern screening there, so I guess the question there is how would we want to handle. Screening because I know there might be some concern, might be some changes with stormwater with what comes up at Concom. We may want to have some type of condition here in here that. we would still have screening because they might be removing shrubbery. Maybe a fence would need to go in on that area, something like that that could change based on, uh, what Concom reviews maybe. Maybe Mark, you could chime in here a little bit on this.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, there, there is some nuance to work through here and part of this is just the innovative nature of the project, not having done a conservation area in coordination with an affordable housing development before. Um, kind of in a nutshell, yes, I, I think, um, Max is, or Dylan is right, excuse me. Um, right at the entranceway, uh, there are going to be some elements that will be associated with the affordable housing construction. Um, some of the stormwater controls, um, some of the screening concerns will be at that entrance. And part of the entrance obviously will serve as emergency access to the, uh, affordable housing units. Um, I'm more thinking ahead to, uh, the back or the western part of the conserve parcel of the conservation land where there will be, uh, unpaved trails, potentially small agricultural structures, kiosks and that type of thing. Um, those kind of take some time to kind of figure out how that property is going to be used. And I just want to make sure that we don't have to have all those nailed down in any sort of plan associated with the much bigger construction, um, that we can kind of let that be more free form and governed by the C R, uh, as Peter mentioned. Um, uh, because again, the Concom will be looking over and, and any changes there and making sure the Concom and the other C R holder, the primary C R holder, which will be Mass Auto Lot. So I don't know the correct way to parse the terms there to kind of, you know, possibly exempt kind of that one entrance area or not, but, um, yeah.
Just set like a distance from the frontage so far deep in the lot.
Currently there, uh, is a plan that shows that access road and like a cul-de-sac at the end of it, uh, which, which extends along the abutting property there as a separate lot. And I, I was wondering if, what if we left that lot as subject to this review? Cause it would cover the, the both the parking area, access road and the, the boundary. And then the remaining back portion, um, it would be, exactly. Do you see right there where it kind of, what if that would be?
So if we limited it to this?
Yes.
You know, it, it's the only thing that we could do and I, you know, if you don't mind saying, I think it's parcel, the feed or dry parcel one fifty four thirty two point two. Um, where it is contiguous with parcel A. So exempt that little bulb at the end because that's probably going to be a little bit of a trail hub back there. Um,
So, so you're saying thirty one point one and thirty one point two would fall under this requirement, but thirty?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I was basically, yeah, well, definitely thirty one point one would. Uh, thirty one point two would up to the point where it is contiguous with that lot one parcel A, which is thirty one two. And leaving, uh, out that again, that bulb at the end, however, we always want to call that out.
Where if we were playing connect the dots, where thirty one point one to the west, where basically where we go up and hit that, that corner, that lot.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
Everybody understand that? Someone set a distance and we say everything from that basically is subject to the plan. Yeah.
Yeah, you could measure that, that would work.
Yep. Okay. So that makes sense? I mean, we know where that pinpoint is. We could say from that pinpoint to the one a lot. Make sure that we're all in agreement.
Jeff.
Yeah, so from this pinpoint to that corner.
Sure.
Yep. And everything, this is subject to landscape requirements, landscape requirements. And this all falls under
C R.
C R.
I mean, and, and it also will all fall under C R as well. We can exempt it from the C R, but, uh, it will also have jurisdiction, I guess, under the forty B as well. Yeah, there, there's no way we could exclude that from the C R. So there'll be double, uh, double municipal input.
Hmm. The, uh, I do know that I believe this is going to go for an A and R for the planning board to finally divide up these lots between the community builders and Kestrel Land Trust. So uh, maybe the, the, oh, sorry, we have.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, um, that's something I had discussed with Paul Haverdy um, the other day or maybe today. Um, actually, we don't, it is eligible for an A and R. Um, but our expectation is, and there's actually something in the condition that says this, the plan will be endorsed by the zoning board, which you have the power to do under forty B. So it's in the later condition that says that the, the, uh, uh, I forget what else is supposed to be recorded. It may be where it says the regulatory agreement is to be recorded. But it also says what must be recorded is the plan endorsed by the zoning board of appeals by you folks. And, you know, I was contemplating that we might make that more explicit. And I would like to because there's really no reason to go to the planning board as Paul has explained. This permit and your, your board has the power to issue everything and it's very common. It's not controversial in this case. Um, so perhaps in that section, which I don't have it right in front of me, but we're talking.
It's C two A.
Yeah, so then if we could add prior to saying shall record the, um, plan endorsed by this, by the board. If we add a statement that says the board shall endorse the, the approved plan subdividing the property.
Jay.
I feel like this is, I, I know we added in findings about the easement of protected land, but I feel like this might be a spot to have a condition that the easement is recorded as well prior to building permit, is that?
I think if, if it's in here, because this is prior to issuance of any building permits, you know, they have to record it. So as long as we say we've, we've divided the property and they will record that division, that meets the requirement.
What is mandating, uh, easement on conservation easement of the property based on this though?
We just subdivide.
What, what proof do we have that it's conservation easement's been recorded?
We can stipulate that in.
So I'm, yeah, so I'm thinking of.
Sure, so we need verbiage that stipulates that the property will be divided and that the lot. Can't do that.
Full size? On which page do we want this on?
This is on C two prior to that it has to be recorded. Is that the correct place to put it there, Paul?
I think that's right. So what I would suggest is adding a sentence at the end of C two A that would state the applicant shall submit a mile out to the board for endorsement as part of the submittal of final plans, dividing the property as shown on the approved plans, which the board shall then endorse.
Yeah, that's fine. All right.
Well, this, this is a question on the timing on that. The subdivision will need to happen, will happen sooner than the submittal of final plans for the conservation restriction be placed on.
Julie, that, that, that's, that's separate. I mean, you can, you can submit it anytime and then the board will sign it. So that's fine, that wording is perfect, in fact.
Correct, right, yeah, it, it doesn't limit it to final plans. It's just by the, by the filing of final plans, you shall have done that. But nothing prevents you from doing it sooner.
Great, thank you, apologies.
Okay.
Um, I just want to check in, it, it seemed like there was some talk about including reference to the conservation restriction in there. I just want to know that just because it is, um, notoriously hard to time conservation restriction approval by the state. Um, it is under review right now, but I, I don't want to, uh, I just want to make sure with my partners that, uh, you know, we're, we're not going to be in some way, uh, impacting uh, the forty B process by kind of tying that in. Um, that is a requirement by our, one of the grants that we're hoping to get. We were awarded, we just reapplied for it from the state. So, um, the conservation restriction is, uh, moving forward. But, uh, again, timing it is tough.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any provision that requires, you know, any sort of timing as it relates to the conservation restriction.
Okay, that would be good.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the applicant? Nope, don't think so, thank you. Is there anything, any other members of the applicant team would like to add before we move forward to the public?
Rossa, thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we will go back to where we were with anyone from the public who has anything they would like to add that is new and relevant to where we stand today.
Shall we discuss it from our seats?
I would ask that you come up here, so we're going to make life a lot easier.
We do want to say no redundancy.
Yeah, yeah, no, no redundancy, we've already gone over that. There again, state your name, address, please fill the record.
Happy was in skiing. It was drive. So I understand your request for no redundancy, but your findings of fact are not factual. So I think we do need to review them. Um, the number thirteen. And some of this is because we didn't get to do a full discussion when we were meeting last. Um, the board engaged in a review of potential civil engineering and site design. The fact that the, all of the issues with the stormwater plan were missed. Um, and they still exist. Um, leads me to believe that that actually isn't a finding of fact. Um, and number nineteen still remains not accurate. The board, um, the fact that the stormwater management plan has been designed in compliance with the mass stormwater management standards is still not correct. There isn't a stormwater plan as far as we've seen. And they can't design it within, with in compliance because they didn't do the testing between November and April as they were supposed to do. So this finding of fact can't be accurate. They didn't do the testing, the one they were supposed to. So therefore they can't yet design a stormwater management plan in compliance with the standards both for the state and the city.
Mr. Chairman, uh, not to interrupt, but it may be easier point by point rather than, you know, having to note everything and maybe miss something. I think that the speaker is not seeing the most recent amendment because at my suggestion last hearing, uh, you were going to add, and I think you read it earlier, that you added that the applicant's energy engineer has represented that as to the stormwater. Um, so that's point one. And the other point is, is as to, I think it was, um, uh, was it finding a fact thirteen that you referenced?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, the board, I mean, that I don't see, I don't, I don't see what's objectionable about that, actually.
It doesn't say that, it doesn't say that it was. Yeah, we heard testimony that it was designed. It doesn't say that it was, it just says we heard testimony that it was.
So what we know is that the, the testimony specifically about the stormwater is not accurate. It's not designed in compliance. It can't meet compliance because the test not done during the specified timeframe.
Heard testimony, we agreed that the testimony, that the that what was designed did not meet the current requirements and that they would have to come up with a final design.
So currently your finding of fact says that the stormwater and rent plan has been designed in compliance with mass storm management standards.
No, it doesn't.
No, it says the testimony was heard that it was. Doesn't say that it was, it says that.
I'm reading from the recent.
No, you're looking at the original. He read it, the chairman read it earlier, it's changed. I'm sorry, I respect your comment, but it, your concern is taken care of. You're reading the previous.
It has the same language. Okay, so we're assuming that the applicant who already made the error is being truthful. The, the error still exists, they can't fix the error because the testing hasn't been done. It can't be done during the timeframe. November hasn't arrived.
Mr. Chairman, but that's been addressed by the condition you added as to the conservation commission review. So the speaker's points have been heard and understood and well taken at the last.
Again, which keeps happening.
And the changes, and the changes.
We're speaking, sir.
No, you interrupted me just now. The condition that you, that was later solves it for you.
We then need to then go to the sewer issue. There is no plan that has been proposed yet as how we're going to get to the Womalkaway. I'm assuming there's going to need to be some easement. What happens if that plan doesn't fall through? Are we then going to connect to Main Street in an appropriate way?
Is that they will connect to the Womalkaway.
Okay.
The way the decision is written.
Typically those plans should be provided as part of this, this process. There's no way to review the process.
They will be reviewed by the city building inspector, by the, uh, water and sewer department.
Without public comment.
Most things on public sewers are done without public comment, yes.
But typically in these processes, basic plans need to be available and there is no basic plan for the sewer connection at this moment.
It doesn't need to be.
There, it, it's, it's a public utility that needs to meet the requirements of the city codes and state codes. That's
Typically those.
Your, what's your, your take on that?
So chapter forty B, an applicant is only required to submit preliminary plans. The plans that have been submitted comply with that requirement. Final detail plans are generally provided as part of the submittal of the final plans.
But the preliminary plans include connection to Main Street. So they're, they're not accurate.
And it was determined that it wouldn't, it's not what we want to do. We've discussed it with the city engineers, they've said that we're going to connect to the.
City engineer is not a licensed engineer. So.
I guarantee you that the submission, final submission as required in the findings that says.
I, I can see that you're not going to listen to anything you have to say.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else who has anything they'd like to add before the board makes a decision? Yes, sir.
I'm Ken Bust, we talked about saying some things last week and I don't keep touching, touching over them again, but it seems like you haven't addressed the problem, uh, and I just want to make sure that somebody addresses it. Because, just because someone that the, the people that are building says it's okay and they hired someone that they know to do it and they get them to say what they want, doesn't necessarily mean it's right. Specifically the, the traffic that I talked to you about last week, I don't want to keep going over it. But I think that ought to be done by some, some of one of us, one of the board, someone that has, that's not connected to them to do a traffic study and maybe get the state involved and say we want to put traffic stop somewhere, like get a big wire or something like that to slow down traffic a little bit. And it, and I don't, I didn't hear your discussions where it was actually discussed, other than the fact that you said there was considerable input from people. And I just, I just think that the considerable input means that we're concerned. And I know you guys are, are volunteers, I mean, you're doing a hell of a job. I could never do what you're doing. So there are some things that are sticking in my head and that's, that's one of them. And if it's not going to be addressed, I have a real problem with it. So that's what I want to hear is the answer as to what you're going to do about it. I mean, I know what it says in your paper and I heard you read them. But I want to know what you're all going to do about it. Are you going to look and do it at all or are you just going to say, well, they said it's okay, so it's okay? You know what I mean?
The challenge that we run into is that the road that they're accessing is a state highway.
I know.
Um, and I think that, Mr. Nudelman, you may be able to speak to this better than I can in that the requirements of trying to get any sort of traffic controlled on a state highway are probably more difficult than anything that anybody on this board would like to challenge.
And we can't.
And we can't. Yeah, and, and, but, yeah. Greg, do you have anything you can add to, by way of traffic controls on a state highway?
Uh, no, with that area being, uh, under the jurisdiction of mass D O T, we, we, we wouldn't look, uh, take much of a look at it as the Department of Public Works. We don't have any jurisdiction, basically any jurisdiction over it.
So if we have concerns, shouldn't they be applying to the state for someone to come down and look at that road?
Yep, and I believe once this process gets to that point, that, that would happen.
Yeah, the, the applicant needs to ask, they need to get permission to put access onto the state highway.
Yes, the entire permitting process will happen through mass D O T, the state highway access permit.
And at which point they will also review the traffic study that was completed and will look for potentially further downstream than just what they're supposed to do. The traffic study that was completed and will look for potentially further downstream than just what they're going to do.
And that is addressed in condition E twenty-two, which requires them to obtain a state highway access permit.
All right, I was bummed, babe. I know a couple of things, just bear with me a second. Traffic, you're gonna have a hundred people living over there and they're gonna be walking over to the big Y, maybe some of them will drive, they may not all have cars. How are they gonna get there, there's no sidewalks anywhere, or are we gonna be required to put on a sidewalk to the big Y, so someplace those people have some way to get there? Are they just gonna be cutting across everybody's property, is there gonna be a fence around the unit so that people can't just cut across people's backyards? To go to big Y over in that area? Are we gonna build a sidewalk for them, how does that, how does that work? There's no sidewalk there now, everybody that goes there now from the housing units, from the houses that are over there, they walk over the guy's lawn on the corner. That's where they, that's how they get there. Does that fall under South Hampton? I mean, I know. I mean, because obviously it has to be the cities that would put in the sidewalks.
Yeah, the town line isn't until you get almost to big Y, it's like the corner of Tractor Supply is. The city, it's on East Hampton's property.
That'll put them out of everybody's yard.
Yeah.
That would be a separate project, though.
Yeah, there's no.
Their project is creating the problem. So.
Or exacerbating.
Something that we can add to that.
Or exacerbating an existing problem.
Right. Something we could add on to the project and say, we, we'd like you to do this just to. Just for keep your neighbors happy.
State highway. It's gotta be the city. Greg, is that, does the installation of a sidewalk on a state highway also fall under the state's jurisdiction?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. Would not fall under the city's jurisdiction at all to do a sidewalk on that section of Main Street.
And they would only be required to put a sidewalk if necessary on their own property.
I'm not sure how that would play out with the mass DOT process.
Yeah. And there again, that's, that's a higher authority than we are.
Right. All right. All right, well, if somebody, you know, we can get some answers, that would be nice, I mean, so, so far I've heard that we can't do anything about anything, it's just kind of. All right, so the other day I wanted to mention, uh. Is there going to be, I think, did I hear you say there's going to be manager out of that complex, there's gonna be somebody there all the time that's, that's in charge?
There will be a management company that oversees the leasing of the property, I believe there's also stipulation in here that there needs to be a, a property manager on site at certain hours of the day.
And just for your information, you're talking about fiber optics and cable, just so you know, the fiber optics and cable don't run into the same, the same pipe, they need a separate. They could probably put one, one fiber optics cable in there as well, one four inch pipe, but that has to be a separate issue. And then regular cable that they would use for anything else. So, you know.
I think in here there is stipulation of, of.
They, they use the fiber optic, there are the cables. Ample, but not exclusive, not exclusively those, but.
So at some point, I mean, if it's at all possible, I, I would kind of like to see answers and writing to some of this stuff, I mean, I know you listened to it all, but I'd like to see the answer. And I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Paul Wilson, I'm on Main Street and every time I say I'm not gonna say anything, but then I come up and say something based on what I've heard. So I'm getting the bigger picture, you're creating something. You're creating, yes, you're gonna have housing, but then there are going to be children, you're going to be people. They're going to be, they're going to be going to school, there's going to be crossing guards, children will be crossing, there will be new bus routes. And then there's nobody taking care of it. This is a state highway. So we don't hear any kind of, okay. Who's gonna take responsibility for that, people crossing, people crossing the road? So you're not thinking about the implications, or I'm not hearing that.
The design of any road crossings on the state highway fall under the state highway jurisdiction? The, if a school bus stop has to be, you know, is, is, if it's deemed that there's students that need to be picked up. And they are picked up on the highway, they would be picked up no different than any other student picked up on the highway currently. Where the bus stops, by state law, they must. Stop. Vehicles, other vehicle traffic must stop.
Okay.
At least we'll be able to get out of the street because it's just a bus stop.
Excuse me, we're, we're. Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'll think about that, thank you.
I'm Gary Wilson, three seventy-seven Main, I'm the major butter. Did everybody get my letter I sent to Dylan?
Yes.
Um, just layering questions, uh, Dylan actually mentioned this a few minutes ago, but the. The boundary line between. Me and them. Is there a plan for that, because it seems like things have changed in the past. I just don't understand what that plan is.
Okay, so this is the property. Mister Wilson's property is. Along here. Is there any, has there been any discussion of any changes or anything like that along those property line?
I believe that initially that there is no, there was no intended change to the plantings that exist along that boundary. And then at the Conservation Commission hearing, there was talk of removing invasives that are currently growing along that boundary. Um, once we heard that, the, the partners, Kestrel Land Trust and the Community Builders. Um, you know, we are happy to leave the plantings as is and would advocate for that to the Conservation Commission, which would have oversight over the removal of the invasives along that boundary. So as of today, we can say that we're supportive of the, the plantings remaining as, as is. Um, there, and that would be another thing that would be under purview of the Conservation Commission.
Okay, that makes sense, but what about the precise boundary line, like, does that mean? Somebody can cross the line and take apart the vegetation?
No, the, the, they would only be allowed to take any vegetation on their property if they were to take any.
And the, the property that directly up to you is the conservation parcel. So there's a, uh, where the access road exists today is the conservation parcel, right from Main Street all the way back. Um, so that, the whole kind of length of your property before it turns in is the conservation parcel.
Okay. So is that a part of this meeting or different conversation?
A part, the, the part, part of the project that we're talking about and part of what CONCOM would have oversight over, um, directing. Uh, the partnership to do with those, but again, we would advocate for the, the, the remaining plantings to stay there or the plantings to remain, excuse me.
On the property that we're discussing?
Yes.
Okay, and there's gonna be like a pins or some sort of boundary identified at some point?
The, the tire lot would probably be surveyed at some point, correct?
I presume so, yeah.
It's, it's been. You know, I know that they put markers out already where the. You, uh. Gas line is and things like that, so.
Okay.
I, I can just add, try to be really quick on that last point, yes, the property has been surveyed, uh, final monuments have not been set on the conservation land, but they will certainly as part of the project. Okay.
Okay, and there's going to be parking right there at the. General boundary area?
It's, it's off the property a little bit, but, you know, kind of where the. I think there's a, like a couple of tractors parked out there right now and a, and a trailer, it's gonna be in or around that vicinity.
And what is that, uh, material? That's not, is that pavement or is that a?
That's just gravel.
Gravel. And it should be slopes towards the major property? Like rain runoff would.
By, by state statute, any water accumulated on the property must remain on the property.
Yep. Okay. So it's unlikely any rain runoff is gonna come my direction, my, my front lawn is a little bit low, so that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, as far as, you know.
Yeah, we, we certainly can't, yeah, can't drain, you know, the, the offsite. Can't change offsite low points, but we certainly can't, you know, as part of the project, have got a control runoff from leaving the site.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, talking about this issue with, uh, Mark earlier today, that was, uh, wanted to include some type of condition that would say. There will be screening just along that property line, because again, that might change as to what's being removed or maintained. It just makes it that some type of screening would have to stay, be it the current screening or I think in, uh, even fencing, if that would be an option as well, should. Vegetation need to be, uh, removed as part of CONCOM's conditions?
Mister Chairman, I, I don't necessarily object, I need to defer to Julia and Jeff Squire, but. If something's being removed because of CONCOM, then we can't agree to a condition that says, well, we have to put something back in. So. That's just the reality.
But we can stipulate the, you know, some sort of, uh, at the end of the. Parking area there. A, even if it's a, you know, postern rail fence or some sort of guardrail that, you know, limit of conservation area. Private property.
Yeah, I, 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 conceptually I understand, I just have to defer to, uh, to Jeff and Julie, if you guys can respond now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just mentioning that, you know, as far as conservation goes, really that boundary line. In that area in front of the property is outside of their jurisdiction, it's outside of the hundred foot buffer. So they can certainly require invasive removal within their jurisdiction, but I'm not sure they have the ability to. Require invasive removal all over the property and parts that aren't their jurisdiction. So, you know, at least insofar as that initial hedgerow and vegetation, I don't see any reason why they would.
They shouldn't be involved in.
They shouldn't be involved in.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, if it's outside the jurisdiction, then you and Julie just have to be satisfied as to what the, the new proposed restriction will be, or, or condition, rather.
My, uh, my only concern here is I know as one of our conditions that the stormwater plan is going to be reviewed by CONCOM. Should any changes, because there's gonna be a parking lot there within, uh, a perdue surface. Should something change where. That. Any vegetation be removed in that area as part of the stormwater management plan? But it's just saying that there will be screening that goes back up in there, that way we're not. We don't have the situation where CONCOM is saying stormwater requires this is being removed and then our conditions are saying that those must be maintained. So we're just putting a condition in that's just saying some type of streaming, so leaving what's there. Or should something need to be removed? Something would be put back, either a fence or new vegetation, but some type of screening, we can say administrative approval on that or review, uh, from the board, whichever the board preferred.
I think, yeah. Verbiage that an administrator approval will be required, should conservation require removal of any of the, the hedgerows? It's this. The Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over certain area. If they, because of the parking area, if they get involved in that and they decide they want to remove vegetation, we then can deem it necessary to put something.
Okay, but that's on the three eighty-five side of the boundary line?
That's still on our, it's still on their side of the property, they are not going to go on your property.
Mister Chairman, if I, if I could add something that I think might help explain it, um, it, it seems that more any, uh, criteria set by the CONCOM related to stormwater controls. Um, may include incidental removal of the vegetation in that hedgerow, I don't think they'll say you need to move it, it's just like, you know, the grading might push that hedgerow again on our side of the property. Um, so again, if any of that vegetation needs to be temporarily removed, you know, to put in the stormwater controls. Uh, we will then be required to kind of replant or do some sort of screening to replace that. Um, but again, I, I don't think they're gonna require us to actually remove vegetation, it would be incidental to putting in those more strict stormwater controls.
Mister Chair, I'm hearing two different things right now.
No, it's that they.
You said temporarily, they may.
No, they are not, they are not going to go, it would only be on their property.
Thought I heard something different.
I think he just changed, um, removal to temporary removal, because if, as we're discussing, if there is required removal, it would be temporary, because then we would be. Replanting and returning it, so I think he just changed the word removal to temporary.
Okay, but on the three eighty-five side.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
Oh, no. Not from here.
Okay, at this point we will close the hearing. So the board have any further discussion before there's a motion made?
Good.
Somebody make a motion?
So Mister Chair, if I, if I may, I can, I can take a shot here at wording how we want to make the motion and somebody can then make it. Uh, Paul, try me if I, if I'm making this motion wrong, but, uh, approval of the, uh, motion to approve. The comprehensive permit, uh, as conditioned. And maybe we want to say something with the change that we've set here. Uh, to grant, uh, planning staff the ability to make the administrative modifications that have been discussed here, uh, in tonight's meeting. Does that motion make sense, Paul?
Yeah, I think that covers it.
All right.
Did you add the conditions and waivers granted in the decision?
Conditions and waivers, sorry. So to prove with conditions, as conditioned and, uh, waived. To grant the, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, is there anybody, I see eight occupants, everybody on the screen is accounted for, is there anyone else who needs, has anything online that has any questions or concerns?
Public comment.
For public comment. I'm sorry, we may have jumped the gun. But I don't hear anybody or see anybody, so. Don't see any hands coming up, so, okay, yeah. All right.
I make a motion. To approve the decision of application for comprehensive permit. By general, uh, forty B, uh, twenty to twenty-three, with the stipulations that the conditions and waivers that we have stipified. Specified are included.
Just also add the, um, just, this again, I'm just gonna have to clean this up and you'll have a chance to review and sign the final decision.
As, as corrected. Okay.
All right. All right, motion's been made.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Four eyes. We have one member who's not here.
Yep.
One absent.
One absent member. And he has an opportunity to review today's videotape, correct? Because he has not missed any other meetings. At that point, does he have the opportunity to then make a, a decision?
Uh, this is gonna be a question for Paul.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't bother going through that, a, a four, uh, four nothing vote is sufficient to approve, so you don't need the other vote anyways.
Okay, I just, I want to make sure we got everybody covered. Okay, so at this point.
I guess, does he then sign later or no?
No, 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 it would just be the four of us. So motion has been made and carried and voted upon to approve the application of the three eighty-five, three ninety-one Main Street via Community Builders. For the application for comprehensive permit to create eighty-seven new and rehabilitate forty existing portable rental units subject to mass general law, chapter forty B. Property is located three D five, three ninety-one Main Street. Thank you one and all for your participation and your understanding of the matter.
Thank you very much.
Night off, thanks. Our next meeting will be the next Wednesday at six P M. For a normal Zone Board Appeals meeting. And that agenda is forthcoming. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?